The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Hasler, Alderman Brumager.
Here.
Alderman Mooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jumper.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rosika.
Here.
We have a forum.
And approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Mark and Carries. And presentation of awards, personal appearances. Don.
Ms. Donbod, should be on your line.
Ms. Donbod, 661 Market Street and surrounding property owners are requesting a speech to the mayor and Board of Aldermen concerning recent sewer drainage in their basements that occurred during heavy rainfall on April 30th, 2017. Any of those people are here, you have the floor.
Okay, back on April 29th and 30th, we hit, as you know, we had a bunch of rain. And we've always had issues since I've lived, well, I shouldn't say always. I moved into my house about 10 years ago. About three years ago, the county, our, the city redid the storm drains on Market Street in the area where we live. And ever since, and I have had a lot of rainwater in my basement. But this time it was sewage, and it was four feet of sewage in my basement. And so, I don't know why this happened, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because it not only happened to me, it happened to the neighbors next to me.
There's more than us, but some people can't make it, they're elderly, but I can just give my, uh...
You need to identify yourself later.
I'm sorry, my name is Kelly Zeiss, I'm at 664 Market Street.
No, Caroline's speaking at 678 Market Street.
All the homes right there in a row?
Yes.
About five houses, right next to Knights of Columbus.
And then across the street, there's two, and I believe...
On both sides of the street?
And I think that the neighbor next to us, I think Gary Grass owns it, he's got it for sale right now. I'm sure it did as well. No, they're never there, but they've had water in that basement before. I can't swear to it, but I could almost guarantee you they had it as well.
When you said that it was rainwater coming in?
It was sewage.
No, but you said before that you all...
Before, I have had a couple of inches of rainwater in my basement. But this time, I, we had the drain plugged, and we had our septic, or our, um, sump pump, thank you, going. And the sump, and it like blew the drain out, and it was just shooting like a fountain out of the drain. And our sump pump couldn't keep up with it. And so, I ran out to Tractor Supply and bought a bigger sump pump, and we were able to pump it out within like 18 hours, I'd say. But it was sitting down there for 18 hours, and we couldn't get the drain plug back in.
Is that a stone foundation?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the stormwater problem you was having before the sewer problem was coming through the foundation?
This time it was sewage.
Yeah, no, but before that?
Yes.
Most of the time when it's just a few days of rain, it's rainwater, two to three inches, but when it's just torrential rains...
Is it seeping from the wall that, when it's rainwater, or is it coming up through the drain?
I have, I have water that actually, I have a sump pump in, a sump and drain where everything flows, but it's constantly pumping water out, and it's not coming through the walls. But during a heavy, heavy rainstorm, I will get seepage through there, but I'm having that tuck point and everything, you know, trying to fix that. But I get some ground water in my basement, that's not a problem. It's when we're sitting there dealing at 4:30 in the morning with raw sewage shooting straight up.
And you can hear your plugs pop out of the ground.
You can plug the floor and close that off, and where your washing machine hose goes through the drain, it shoots straight out of that.
Yeah, I draw pictures.
You plug that off, you can blow the pipes off your plumbing.
I have a question, so...
Yes, sir.
Normal, heavy rains, foundations seepage, normals?
No, but, but, but this, is this occurrence, was it just when we had that crazy rain where it was like 15 inches?
I got it back in December.
The sewage is, the sewage is only when we're having heavy rain, but it didn't start until after they went up by the high school, up Ninth Street, put all the new stores in.
I see.
The house at 665 Market Street, and that's, uh...
Next to mine?
No, that's, it's, uh...
Oh, geez, yeah, Phyllis.
Um, they, right after that source system was put in, they had the city out there, I know, five or six different times where they had to dig up everything. And now, they don't have a problem with it no more. We're dealing with it across the street and down the street.
It flooded their basement so bad, Sir Pro had to come and fix it.
Oh, yeah, we know that.
And she, she has, um, has pictures of how high the water was in her basement. I didn't get pictures of Phyllis across, um, Yvonne across the street. Her husband, he was hospice, he couldn't do anything. I was called at 4:30 in the morning, I'm up to my knees in sewage, trying to replug everything and hook it up to sump pump. And once we got the water down and cleaned it out, it was shelling up sewage, shelling up. Mine comes out, I have an exhaust pipe, a vent pipe right outside my house, I don't have the same internal problems, but when that sewage comes up, it's shooting two feet out. And, I mean, it's toilet paper, it's, when it's all dried up, you're dealing with toilet paper, feces, and you don't know what else you're walking in.
Right.
Steve?
First off, have any of you guys reported?
Can you step up to the...
Hello, everyone? Have, uh, have any of you guys contacted the sewer department?
I did back in December when it happened. I've had to replace three water heaters because of the flooding in the basement. And I was just told, there's nowhere for the water to go, was the answer that I got.
And I had that experience because even the manhole cover that sits at 664 Market Street, right in front of my dryer, that cover was blown off the street. Stupi had to put up barricades around it. The water department came down there, they stopped looking, and I asked him at that time, when the sewage was shooting, you know, two feet off my vent, I said, "What's that?" He goes, "It's water." I'm like, "It's not water." He walked in and looked at it, he goes, "Well, the whole system's backed up, the city's flooded, we can't do anything about it."
That's all I, that's all we keep hearing, is there's nowhere for it to go. Everything's backed up, and the rain's.
In the event like we had last time where we had 16 inches of rain, uh, you know, the sewer system is going to be full, every system in the area is full.
Well, what I, I don't understand is why does runoff water from the rain affecting the sewer system?
Yeah, I don't understand that either.
I didn't think...
Because the sewer doesn't run, or the water, runoff water doesn't run through the sewer, right?
It's not supposed to.
Okay.
That's what we're discussing.
You have homeowners that have gutter drains tied into them, yardisms in lower, low-lying areas in yards that are contributing to it. You have roof runoff, you have some runoff down, down the streets where it enters in the manholes. You have aging infrastructure. It's a combination of many, many things. And if everyone did their part, it would reduce it all greatly.
But there's no way we can fix up, fix a system where we're not getting raw sewage through our basements?
Uh, at this point, I mean, we can start looking into...
Well, that's what we're asking, is try to find a way to fix this, you know, make a solution, because...
Yeah. Because every spring, if it rains like this, we're gonna have this issue every year. I made an, uh, homeowner's insurance claim, and because it was sewage, they covered my washer, my dryer, my hot water heater, my boiler system, thank God my air conditioner was okay. But they won't cover any of my personal items that I lost. So, I've also made a claim with the city's insurance company. Now, I talked to the guy today, and he said he was needing more information from the city, and it would be another couple of weeks before I heard back. So, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I don't want sewage in my basement every time we get a big rain.
Yeah.
Steve, is there any way we can help them alleviate that problem? What can we do?
Well, I think first thing, you know, maybe start with the, uh, maybe like a inspection of the underground utility that, that serves them in the area. See if there's any defects, see if there's something on their end that needs to be repaired, see if there's something on our end. Maybe we, we look around for, for a problem and see which direction to go from there.
Can we do a smoke test to that section?
We can, and we should, yes.
Yeah, we don't want these poor people going through that all the time.
I don't know what the problem is at this point, but I will figure it out.
That's all we're asking for.
Great, yeah, thank you very much.
And rainwater is not a problem, but when you're in sewage, you have to go get your shots afterwards? You know, it's...
That's gross.
Yeah.
Steve, how soon can you get started on doing that?
Uh, next week.
Good.
I'm waiting for ten days. So, I mean...
That's actually good.
Do you want, do you want our phone numbers?
Yes, I want all your guys' contact information.
Okay.
That way we can all stay in the, on the same page.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
The question is, you said it didn't start till after the new storm?
Mine did it.
That's gotta be a coincidence, wouldn't you?
Mine did it.
It is, it's, all of it started right after they put in, and it's all, all upper. It starts up there by the school, it comes down the hill. We're on Market Street, so everything...
Right at the bottom of the hill.
Ninth Street comes down this way, they put new drains and everything in there, but the water's still, even when they put the sidewalks and stuff on the side, the water washes straight down there, and comes right down Seventh Street, shoots down Seventh Street to the water department down there.
It's the water on the surface, though?
This is heavy water on the surface since they've done it.
That's what's not getting into the sewer.
This is, yeah, but this is since they put the new sewer system in and everything else. So, now all the water's rushing at us down there.
Yeah.
And it's blowing our drains up quick.
Let's be clear, that's storm water.
Yeah, storm water, yes.
That's, that's storm water.
It's not sewage, it's just regular water. But it seems it flooded more, so...
Yeah, that don't make sense. They had to put in so we didn't have to worry about that.
Well, yeah, but the issue, Steve, Gary, I know both you guys were, the issue with Phyllis's across the street, that was, that was because of that stormwater pipe. That was not sewage water that was in her basement. That was, that was storm water that was...
Right, right.
Because that pipe went through there and came across under...
That was, that was the abandoned pipe that was going in there, bro.
Right, right. So, that was, that wasn't sewage, it was in her basement, that was storm water.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know where the cutoff is on the street there, for those who are affected and those aren't, I just know that we live like on, almost right there in the dip.
We're in the bowl, right there.
Right there, it's everybody in there.
Knights of Columbus, right next to my house, Knights of Columbus, and it starts going up. Once you get back up on top of the hill, people can flush their toilets and everything else. We can't flush our toilets, we can't take showers, can't drain our sinks, the water's just all backed up. It's storm water, problem, not sewage. It's the sewage issue that we...
Sure.
Yeah, I know, you can't, south of Brooklyn, but, I mean...
And a normal sump pump can take care of water.
Right, I, yeah, I...
But when it's sewage, it's shooting out, but it has no place to go, and sewage...
Like, I've got steps that go down to my basement from the outside, and I've opened it up, and the water is on the steps.
Yes, well, that's how our, we open the door up on the 30th in the morning, and we're like, oh my God.
Before you guys get out of here, I'll give you my cards.
Awesome.
And, uh, if you guys can call me directly, 24 hours a day.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all listening to us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll go on to the city administrative report.
Okay. This report's gonna be a little different than normal, because there's some things I'd like to discuss with the board. It was handed out at your seat when you arrived. Yeah, I was out of town on Tuesday when...
Oh, okay, here we go.
So, you did get put in the pack. Um, you've been talking about Chadwell Lane, um, the, with the, um, Ed Baumann took a look at that as he had done before, and he put together some information that's been sent to the, to MoDOT for them to evaluate on whether it's satisfactory to make those design improvements at the intersection with the highway. Paul Arnold's talked to both property owners, although we knew Baumann was already cooperative, but Mr. Reese on the other side, Reen, said, whatever, he's cooperative, and he'll go along with the program. So, um, the only kind of impediment to proceeding with it would then be MoDOT's approval and obviously getting it out. It's gonna be in the order of magnitude of 70,000 to 75,000 without inspection fees. So, um, you know, we're looking at about what we thought it was gonna be before, eighty-five thousand, maybe. Um, the, uh, but it brings about kind of the larger discussion, and that's this spreadsheet here. And, uh, we've been talking, and Alderman Brumager brought up a couple of times about what, what roadwork we should do. This is an evaluation that Gary and Dave did, um, probably a year before last, on all the streets, their conditions, and, um, for the purposes of deciding where you wanna go spend money. Right now, out of general revenue, we have, depending on tax sales, which are down right now, about $180,000, maybe $190,000 available to do street work. Um, and then, we still have the $75,000 in the account from the special road budget. So, Alderman Brumager has suggested a work session maybe next week, or before or after our next meeting, to, and gives consideration to, to what work we can do. I think Gary and I can come up with a, just for overlay, kind of a average per square foot cost, uh, and, and we could use that for deciding based on the square footage of the roads involved, kind of how you wanted to spend it. And this doesn't include spending any money out of the capital improvement fund. So, um, I gave it to you just for the purposes of your review. We'll probably look for a work session next week, for two weeks, and, uh, maybe make some decisions on where to go with that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Under rating, 1 through 10, is that order of importance or severity of how bad the street is?
Condition of the street.
Condition of the street, yeah.
10, 10 being...
10 being...
10 being great.
Real nice condition, and 1 being really, really bad.
Um...
Have to ask them.
Pardon?
Ninth Street.
Let's say 41063.
Yeah, what's that?
That's the rating.
Yeah, what's that?
Pick a number, I guess.
I think it depends on which section.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's multiple numbers, it'd be sections of...
Oh, okay. Yeah, it definitely...
I thought maybe that was simpler.
It's a five-digit.
So, um, not many 10s.
No.
I'd say anything from a seven on up, we would not have anything to worry about right now.
And some of them don't.
Gary, come up to the podium, please, if you might. We were just talking, I would think anything from a seven on up is nothing that we should worry ourselves about right now.
Correct.
Six, borderline?
Yeah. You know, probably between the four, five to six is a street that could probably be overlaid. Anything probably four and below is...
There's no base, you can...
...redo. Biggest problem is a lot of them streets, there's no base under, and some of them that do have base, it's creek rock.
Yeah.
So, we get a lot of water in, and it just, it gets spongy.
Moves around.
That's what happened on Jefferson.
Yeah.
Where, but Valley Desert there, it was all creek rock under there, and it just sponged out.
Condition is always a consideration, setting your priorities, the level of use is a consideration?
Oh, yeah.
Part of the city, maybe, because...
If we have $250,000 to spend, we're not gonna get a whole lot of rain.
Doesn't go very far.
Not on a replacement, for sure.
No, no way.
Gary, how did Portis Street get a 2?
Well, this is, this is...
That must be a little paper.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
10, half to 10, yeah.
And some of them have no rating.
Why would that be, Rick, Gary, I wasn't there, North Fifth Street is an example, doesn't have any...
They drive, they're government, that's, yeah. That's pretty... They can't be occurring.
Yeah, it's not, it's the only one I've ever gotten from a, from a street.
I think I've got a more current one.
Well, I agree with your assessment, Alderman, that, that thing's rough, yeah.
Oh, you're right, it's not...
You got Mary Ellen's schedule?
If I got it, you should have.
No.
We did some patchwork on Mary Ellen's this last week.
It says here two inch, so I guess it could be...
All right, there is a newer one, I'll email it to you.
Yeah, well, we're basically looking at older one now, too.
Right.
It's kind of a move thing.
You'll have it tomorrow, in your email.
Right.
Okay, uh, Mayor Hasler requested that we put the UTD ordinance, even though it isn't apparently required, that we have a public hearing for consideration of that ordinance. He, he, he wanted one, so we're scheduled during our regular Board of Aldermen meeting, two weeks hearing, and I only know two people who have an active interest, and I'll notify both of them personally.
There's two out here.
Okay. There you go, now we have four.
Yeah.
Frank has recommended from time to time over the years that, before an ordinance is introduced, that someone on the board sponsoring.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and it apparently doesn't require any formal action in terms of an ordinance or resolution, it's just gonna be a business practice. But if one of you has an idea that you want to pursue, you become the sponsor. Uh, if, I think there is a need, and I propose it to you, one of you will have to agree to sponsor it.
Unless it's an administrative...
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping, budgetary, that would not... The idea being, at different times in our history, we've had committees that will study a particular issue. And coming out of that committee, the committee would have someone that says, "Well, I'll sponsor that, and I'll speak in favor of it," or something. So, we were looking for a sponsor and a second coming out of committees. Well, you don't do committees hardly anymore. So, this would be more of something coming out of a work session, or, or something that you would go to Martin or to me and say, "Would you draft an ordinance regarding so-and-so?" And then that would be presented to you, and see if you feel like it meets the concerns that you have. And if you say, "I'm not sponsoring this piece of junk," then it would, it wouldn't come, it wouldn't come before the board. If, if, it should be sponsored by someone who's interested in presenting it to the board, you could vote against it even if you're a sponsor. But if you think it's important that it be brought to the board to discuss, then it ought to be like a motion and a second on the ordinance. And it would probably save Martin some time drafting something that maybe only one of you's interested in, and it doesn't even have a second. I know we've done this in the past, it's been a while, maybe 10 or 15 years, but it seems to, it all seems to work.
So, good, you think we should start following that proceeding?
Sure. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we used to do it, I remember that.
Yes.
Who was here, Angler? Was Angler here?
He might have been.
Boy, that was a few years back.
Yes.
About that.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that.
Just the other day.
Just stay forward until you say stop.
30, yes.
Yeah.
I'm 43.
So, we attended the community, we being, oh, person, the, uh, community television board meeting, and I don't want to steal this under if he wants to report on anything, but I did discover something that was interesting, and I didn't know. So, as I said, our sales taxes have been flat or even down, we're down $6,000 for the year. And, uh, let the receipts of the franchise fee of community television have gone up, and they're higher than they were last year at this time. And I can't explain why, but it's kind of interesting, and, uh, maybe inversion, I don't know.
Well, wouldn't that have to be subscribers?
It'd have to be.
Yeah. So, they...
Apparently cable subscribers?
Yeah, it's cable subscribers. It used to be the city gave a franchise to the cable television operator, and in exchange for the privilege, the cable operator collected money from the subscribers to give to the city so we could have a community television system. The, uh, cable television industry was successful in convincing the legislature that they should adopt an either-or requirement, and that is either the cable television would have a franchise from a local entity, or they can subscribe to a state franchise. Well, they all, you know, it's, the purpose was to get away from the local franchises with all of their differences and interpretations, and now they have one uniform franchise, and I don't understand why it made sense for them. Uh, but we don't know how many subscribers there are anymore. So, we, we just have to determine it based on how much money we receive. And I guess we could back into it, you know, in terms of the math, but, uh, the only explanation would be they've got more subscribers now.
Yeah.
Which, again, doesn't seem, which counterintuitive to me, but...
Well, maybe since it's spectrum now, that instead of charter, they might think it's better.
That's right. Nobody remembers that old company.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we've also had a number of discussions about scooters, so, um, for sponsorship, uh, the, um, Alderman Prince would, was, would be, would like to be the sponsor of a scooter ordinance. Uh, and so, I put down kind of some issues that I would need to put in the ordinance, just to get your input on whether you think, number one, should they all have to wear helmets or headgear? Riders and passengers regardless of age?
Yes.
Yes.
Should minor passengers, like under, if you're, if you're... Under 16 be allowed?
I don't, I didn't even think them scooters were designed to have more than one person at that time.
I see it. I see it all the time, yeah. Some of them.
Yeah, some of them are.
Well, the reason I bring this up, and we've talked about it before, is I've gotten calls after calls, you know, I guess because people see me riding around all the time, but, um, it seems like the biggest problem is, I want to say, the age group under 21. Uh, you know, you got two, three people hanging off the back of these, some of the scooters. Now, as far as, like, the adults, I don't think that's a safety issue. Most of them, at least all the ones I've seen, you know, ride with common sense, so I don't, I guess what I'm looking at here is not necessarily to go after the adult riders or to change anything as far as they're concerned, except for the passengers. A couple of people complained that, you know, they got their little kids on them with them, but then the couple that I've seen, they've had helmets on the little kids, so, um, what I've been asked to bring up is to possibly come up with an ordinance, anybody under the age of 21, uh, has to at least have, at least like a bicycle helmet on, some sort of head protection, and if you're under the age of 21, definitely no passengers.
Wait, wait.
I mean, I, I, it was my understanding...
Anyone over the age of 21 doesn't need a helmet? Is that what you're saying?
Over the age of 21.
Everybody has to wear a helmet. I mean, not gonna require a helmet.
Well, they, they weren't, they were just saying that, uh, the large groups of kids that are going around, you know, they're, I don't want to say bouncing off each other and stuff, but, uh, they were more concerned about them than they were the adult riders.
Yeah, but Joe, you're not, you're not in favor of someone 21, older than 21? Yeah, but Joe, you're not in favor of someone twenty-one, older than twenty-one.
Twenty-one and over, I'm not, personally, no.
Not what?
In favor of them having to wear helmets or changing anything regarding them, it's just.
So if you're under twenty-one, you have to have a helmet?
That's what they're asking, yes.
I had a scooter come by my house the other day, and it was an adult, and there was a baby in front of him. In other words, he was kind of holding the baby. When I say baby, it could have been two or three, but it was a small child. You may want to do some research on what other communities are doing with smaller kids, you know. Are you gonna be worried? I mean, scooters aren't really designed to have like a baby seated in back of you, but.
I was about to say that somehow worded that unless there's a seat for them, they shouldn't be hanging on a person, you know, you don't want one individual hanging on another one. That's just stupid, you know. I mean, if there's a seat for them and some way to secure them.
And I can never have a seat.
Well, I know that.
You'll have the foot pegs, but they won't reach the foot pegs.
Right.
On the back of a scooter. But some of this is just kind of common sense.
Yeah, well, common sense is not common, so.
I would say there might be a minimum age to even ride as a passenger.
Well, that's one of the things is we.
Chief, you want to take care of that for us?
Yes, sir. Maybe a minimum height for a passenger.
Nice job.
Makes some sense.
Right.
I don't see, and this is my opinion, if headgear is good for somebody under twenty-one, I think it's good for someone over twenty-one.
I know some cities in St. Louis require headgear.
I know.
And so if you're riding around St. Louis County, you might move from community to community and be illegal, but I'm making this up, but you might be legal in Ellisville and illegal in Ballowing.
The state still has a, for motorcycles, and I know that's a bigger, that's over fifty cc engine or whatever, they still have a helmet requirement for everyone regardless of age.
Right, for now.
Yes, it's, every year it comes up, somebody puts a bill in to do away with it. Well, I can certainly investigate what other communities are doing, but are these the issues you want to see addressed?
I guess, yeah, when it comes to an adult, is it our job to protect adults from their own stupidity?
Yes, it is.
Somewhat, yeah.
The state does it, that's why we have speed limits.
By making them wear motorcycles, like getting helmets.
Right, but there's pretty strong opposition to that, too.
I understand that.
Good job on that one, Steve.
I'm not equipped for that kind of a. Yeah, I will to leave. Are we proposing that this be a primary offense then, as far as the ability to stop them solely for that reason? I mean, with like the seatbelt, the seatbelt law is not a primary offense unless they're under sixteen, but you start running into, I guess just the reasonable person standard that this person's under sixteen, even though they look young, they're eighteen, and then it's not necessarily an unlawful stop, it's a good faith stop. But we would run into that with the scooters. If you're saying kids that are eighteen cannot have passengers, or kids that are eighteen have to have a helmet, and we're stopping them solely on the fact that they don't look eighteen, could present an issue, but I don't know that it would be a huge issue.
I've been asked to take a proactive approach rather than a reactive, and rather than wait till somebody gets injured because of what's going on.
Alright, I'll just ask for clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how we'll set it up, but.
I would think it would have to be a primary, because.
I mean, now, just for everybody that's watching, if you are riding this scooter, you have to have a valid driver's license to operate the scooter, that's state law. So that would indicate that they're at least sixteen, or maybe eighteen for the full license. So that would get some of the requirements out of the way as far as.
What's different, the full license?
You get intermediate license, and the permit phase has changed a little bit, and it's not until you turn eighteen that you actually have a full license. There are restrictions on your license up until that point. You can't be out over a certain hour of the night unless you have a job, or you can't have passengers that aren't family members for a certain period. And then after that period, you can have one passenger that's not a family member. It's, there are different steps for the different licensing. But once they're granted their full license, I think it's at eighteen, then it's just a normal driver's license that we have, so. So we could look at something like that, restricting it until they have their full license and not an intermediate license.
Chief, how many people do you stop that you think, man, you're pushing, are you sixteen or not? Do you stop those kids, or do you just let them?
On the scooters?
Yeah.
I don't know that we've ever stopped anybody for any suspicion of not being sixteen. I stopped a kid a month or so ago that was driving a car that was fourteen, but.
I had a kid on my street the other day that's twelve years old that was riding a scooter.
Okay, and there are those small, and we have stopped some of those, the small battery powered ones that are almost like a power wheel type scooter that I've seen drive, the kids driving on the street, and we've contacted them just because it's such a safety issue, it's.
Chief, we had a period of time when like, it might have been a snowy event, but we had some youngsters riding around on small motorcycles, I call them, and they all got tickets for not having a regular driver's license. And then they expressed surprise that they had to have one. But they came through city court, and the parents were, it was explained to the parents that just because they have a learning permit, it's not a regular driver's license. Something you might want to consider also is that if it's larger than fifty, it would be treated as, fifty cc's, it would be treated as a motorcycle. And so if an adult with a seventy cc, it's got to have a plate on it. It's got to have insurance. But there's no state law that says you can't carry passengers or anything like that. You might want to think about that, I mean, a small scooter of forty-nine cc's versus a seventy cc, which is going to cause more harm, you've got higher speeds. And this is where, we're talking about a sponsor and a second, you might want to throw something out and shout that ordinance around, and try to get at least one alderman that says that your areas of regulation that they agree with, and then they can come before the full board and get debated.
But how far are you going to take that? To drive that seventy cc, you have to pass a separate test, you have to have an endorsement of a motorcycle license to do that, not just a regular driver's license. So we're going to let forty-nine cc's operate with just a regular operator's permit?
Yeah, they actually fall under the definition of a motorized bicycle. And I don't know if any of you remember mopeds, where you actually had pedals. They somehow allow a forty-nine cc scooter to be considered as a motorized bicycle. And then, so that opens up the issue of, what about mopeds? Do you want them to be under the same? In other words, you've got to have a definition of what is a scooter, and the state definition, I think, I think the motorized bicycle actually says of anything under forty-nine cc's, I believe so. So you have to pretty much use the state definition of a motorized bicycle to pull that into your ordinance?
So I think getting above the forty-nine cc's is probably splitting hairs, because like you said, it's a, it's a considerable motorcycle at that point, it's licensed as such, and you have to have the endorsement for that.
But we as a city, we can set those guidelines for age, passengers, headgear. That's all within our rights to set all of those.
General rule is that we can adopt regulations that are more restrictive than the state, but we can't relieve somebody for the obligation to abide by the state restrictions.
I think Cape Girardeau adopted a pretty tough scooter ordinance, because one of the students got killed on a scooter, you might want to take a look at theirs. I know it does require helmets in Cape Girardeau.
I'll call Cape, and we have this, this serve with M M L, and I'll just ask anybody that's got a board and send it to me. Okay, and finally, you're aware that a sales tax was approved for the community center? And the question was raised, does that sales tax revenue apply to the downtown Tiff district? And the answer we've discovered is it can't. If the county commission chooses to have it apply, they don't have to. And so the question before you is, should we ask them to? This is something that Alderman Grimminger has given some thought to.
Should we ask them what?
To, to apply the revenue that comes in from this new sales tax.
Right.
To the downtown Tiff fund.
Oh, okay.
Or the Chiara.
I, I mean, we don't have anything to lose by asking, right? I think it, um, just, you know, the economic benefit that it, I mean, the whole reason for it was, you know, to help the economic downtown area, and if the, and the county certainly believed in it to start with, the fact that, yeah, it's really not generating a whole lot now, but it's still pretty young, but, you know, I think we ought to ask them.
Go on. I will prepare that letter with your, I will say, the Board of Aldermen has asked me to require. Okay, you might have any questions beyond that? Thanks.
And we'll move on to staff reports, Chief Starker?
Good evening, everyone. Probably a couple of the biggest things that I'd bring to your attention is, we did have a transmission issue with one of our trucks. It actually broke down in the St. Louis area, and we were able to limp it into the truck centers that does freight line of work. We spent about two thousand dollars on electronic upgrades and fixes on that truck. So if there's a silver lining, it would have gone out here, we'd have had to tow it up to St. Louis, and we had a big toll bill, so. And there's a silver lining to it, and the other thing is our monthly firefighter of the month, this month was Justin Donovan, who's been with us for seven years. We made him lieutenant about a year ago, and he's one of our main training officers now. And he's also actually tomorrow going to school to get fire service instructor two, who'll be the highest trained instructor we've ever had on our department. So he's to be commended for his service.
Great.
And Kirk to be, let's really agree about all of that.
He's one of our younger volunteers.
Yes. And I might mention too, in case grandpa hasn't mentioned anything, they did receive a bundle of joy just a couple of days ago, he has a new daughter.
Oh, great.
Any questions on the report?
Good job.
Yes, sir.
Uh, total responses for the year, up to forty-eight calls, how?
It just varies, it's like anything else, it depends on the type of calls we get. Most of our calls honestly are EMS assist, probably sixty-five to seventy percent of them, where we go out and help the ambulance, and it just, it varies. I had the highest year I can remember doing reports, almost two hundred and thirty-something calls, and one year we were down to a hundred and sixty-five, it just, from year to year, it varies. Yes, sir.
Have you done that?
Well, I had one other question and stuff. Why is it the fire department's job to assist on EMS calls? I never understood.
It was primarily started because we run extrication, and if we wait till they get on scene of a car wreck, and then they ask for us, and then we respond out with extrication tools, it takes that much longer to get the tools there to get somebody out of a car. It's primarily the way it started. The other thing is, to us, it benefits the community by getting us there quicker in case the ambulance is coming from outside the city limits or things like that. It's kind of the way of the world with the fire service, most fire departments are running EMS.
Man, I can understand under an accident, you know, but are all of them accidents?
No, there's medical shows for unconscious patients and things like that, too. They're supposed to dispatch us on life threats only, which would be unconscious, CPR needed, calls like that.
A lot of those are lift assist, or if the two paramedics have to be in the back, one of you drives the.
Occasionally, we will help by driving, or give them extra manpower to do things to help patient care.
Are our volunteers compensated for that?
No, we're a hundred percent volunteer. We do not bill for our services.
It wouldn't be for you guys, I wouldn't be alive here today, would not be here today.
That's what I hear, I wasn't there that night, but yeah.
Would not be here.
So does the ambulance dispatch every fire?
For structure fires, they do, they come out and do what they call rehab. We had a structure fire down on a light haze recently, and we have a group of our ladies, our wives, that come out and do what we call rehab, and they come out and they'll help take blood pressures and pulse ox pre, and get us water and things like that, and the ambulance is standing by in case there's a medical emergency where they have to take over.
We've had to do that time between my recollection.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
How's your fire truck shopping going?
Actually, I think I'm just about ready to bring it to the board for approval. We've gone over, I've been through over two hundred pages of specs on it several times, and we're trying our best to design something that's going to be a long-term benefit to the city, and still trying to keep it within our budget, and I think we're real close. I'll probably be coming in to talk to Martin in the next few days and showing what I've got, and see what our next step is.
Great.
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 Kenny, I'm shopping that fire truck and stuff, I mean, I guess it's a big help that we have a couple of firefighters that are professional firefighters that do that every day.
Yeah, it's a definite benefit. I'm kind of, obviously as a chief, taking the lead in this, but also because I'm a career firefighter, and I've worked on ladder trucks, I know what needs there are, and we're taking input from everybody on the department, because we've got some guys that have been there for forty years, and it's about time to retire, we've got some guys that are fresh, and they're going to be there hopefully for twenty or thirty years, so we're trying to get everybody's input on what's going to be the best thing.
Good deal.
Kenny, once again, you do a great job.
I appreciate that, sir.
I really do, I really do.
Anything else? Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Hello?
Hello.
So you have my report, there's really not a whole lot going on last month. It was, I did attend the twenty seventeen Missouri Preservation Conference in Hannibal. Had a lot of, a lot of different courses and things that we were able to take, and I learned a lot while I was there, so it was beneficial, and it assisted with our C L G status, so. Just a couple of other things that are not on my report that I just wanted to touch base on. One is, later on the agenda, there will be an ordinance in front of you for a subdivision plat. If it's in favor, due to the time constraints, I'd like to request a consideration for a second reading. And then the only other thing is, forty-two South Main is, as, I think in last month's meeting was discussed, I still have been unable to reach her, so I'd like to request to proceed again with another nuisance on the building this time, and well, actually, it'll probably be on the entire property, and so that we can move forward with getting this resolved once and for all, hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's going on, we're waiting to ask.
Yeah.
What it should be.
So. Sorry.
Yeah.
That's the hook thing.
I'm going to check on that one this, actually tomorrow, because I got a call that everything was taken care of, but I believe maybe the sun might be back, and so I'm going to check up and make sure that everything's still in compliance.
There's other areas of town also, right, Carl, that you're keeping a close eye on, I know.
There's other areas in town, I'm sending out letters all week and making phone calls to people, and, and just trying to stay on top of it as best as.
What are most of the cases that you're tracking?
Grass, trash, vehicles unlicensed. I mean, that's the bulk of it. And honestly, I'm getting complaints now on just property maintenance, you know, painting, just the condition, overall condition of the buildings and things like that, so. Those are things that we're trying to work on as well.
Well, you want your neighbor to take care of his stuff.
Yeah.
Do we have any teeth, though, when it comes to having someone paint their house?
Um, we do, because it's in the International Property Maintenance Code, which was adopted, the two thousand and twelve, Property Maintenance Code, and in there it does have a complete section on the exterior maintenance of the property.
Great.
We have not been, we have used it, we have.
We've used it on occasion.
Using the Property Maintenance Code for enforcement.
Yeah, we've used it on occasion, but the few times that we have used it, it has, it's been effective, and we haven't had to pursue anything any further. But we do have that option if we can, if we need to.
It's a wake-up call for people that don't even, maybe don't even realize it.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's kind of questionable, agree.
Right, right.
I think it becomes a point so long where it just becomes an evergreen. It lives, you know, you live there, and you just, it's always there, and you don't see the problem.
Right.
It's just, we will become blind to this.
Anyone have any other questions? Thank you.
Good job, Carl.
Yep, good job.
And Eric.
You all have a copy around my report. Do you want me to go through each part or do you have any questions?
How like the things you think are most important?
Did you mow?
We mowed.
Mow, mow, mow.
I mean, there's some things that are out of your order.
Yeah, we replaced a couple of streetlight poles, one on Merchant Street that broke off due to old age. It was one of the originals yet. Uh, we didn't manage to salvage the head, which is not normal. It fell into a planter, so it saved it. Uh, we put the handicap spots down by the Presbyterian Church, added the correct signage for that. We, the, the yellow lines painted on the curb with maple and night, or maple and St. Jimmy. We got the sign up at Dave Pinkley Memorial Park. We did some patching on asphalt.
Got the street repaired?
Yeah, the street repaired. We got the trench where we ran the electric to the police building. That's all complete now.
The, uh, light at computer shop is kind of a neat arrangement. Uh, these are those decorative lights that we have in the downtown area. Property owner, uh, way, way back when paid, paid for the installation of the light. It's wired to the city's electric meter. Somehow the light disappeared years ago and, uh, computer people asked if we would reinstall it and so they checked to make sure the electric was still good and computer shop paid for the, the fixture. We installed it and they don't pay for any maintenance on that fixture.
The light disappeared from there?
Well, it might not get over and never got replaced.
That's one just like all the rest.
Yeah.
I want to compliment you on that Merchant Street one. I was out that evening and someone had told me that that had fallen over and I went out there to check it out. By the time I got out there, you guys were on it and taking care of it. Yeah, quick, very quick, so nice job.
That's good.
Thank you. Uh, we got all the, the water department where they had patches in the road. We got all them repaired now.
What do you do with all that stuff you get out of the creeks when they're displaced? I know you had a pretty large pile down.
Turn it to the brush site and burn it.
I figured that would make sure. Eric, did you get everyone in point-based section of fees?
I believe, well, I mean, I talked to a few of them and passed the word along.
And while most people only call when they want to complain about something, we do get compliments on the way the cemetery.
Yeah, it looks a lot better.
And we had a large, I did just a couple of things I added to mine that I didn't have on the report when it's in. We had a large tree limb fall out of the tree up at the old cemetery onto the fence and did some damage. We got that cleaned up and straightened up and working on bids on getting the tree removed. We had, uh, Citizens Electrics Arborist come up and look at it and said the tree was doomed and needed to come down.
More damage.
Yeah, you can take that. So you've got significance, but.
Yeah.
Dead, it's dead.
Questions or comments?
Just please collect the lightning, is that what you're talking about?
Very little. That Neil said that there weren't enough crown left to keep it alive or keep it going.
Hey, what's your plan on maybe patching and some of that dura patching?
Probably going to do more asphalt patching than dura patching.
Go ahead and express your opinion.
My, my personal opinion is it's not any better than asphalt patching. It's not cheaper and it's a lot more time by the time, you know, you figure, you have to put down a lot of cover rock on it. If you don't, you get complaints of it sticking to cars, the tires and throwing up on cars. Then when you get an abundance of cover rock, it's too much, you know, it's like driving on a gravel road and then we have to go back and sweep it up and that granite's hard on the sweeper and my personal opinion, it's more feasible that patch with asphalt than than dura patch.
Cool up as well, patch over there, asphalt?
Yeah. We, and a lot of patching we did this past week, we patched over a dura patch.
Dura patch, it's like Liquid Market Street was like. I mean, it's, it's just rough and it still is in front of valley, of course. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
Well, you're basically putting gravel down the dumpster.
Right. And it's just, it's raised, it's, you know, inch or so, maybe someplace it's.
But the Market Street, I know that was kind of a crack, still.
Yeah.
And it's not really designed to do that. You know, it's, it's made to patch a puddle.
Yeah.
Not to, you know, try to fix any alligator cracks or, or running cracks.
It's too, right, rough, too much work.
You wind it to speed mode.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
And committee reports. Now we'll do public comments. Seven, nine minutes from the Board of Alderman regular meeting, May 25th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And minutes from the Board of Alderman closed session, May 25th, meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any opposed? Any old business to discuss? Move on to new business. Bill number 4159, uh, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces program and the St. Genevieve Police Department in an amount not to exceed $25,000, first reading.
Wait a minute, may I ask a question? I don't remember that figure being 25,000. Is that what we decided?
That's what's in the agreement.
The last time we had talked about.
We talked about, we bannered things around.
Because it wasn't figured then, right? It was a online contract and we didn't like that.
Yeah, but we didn't know the figure we were going to put down at that time.
The, the 25,000 I think is a limit on how much any one.
One could spend, yeah.
One officer can be reimbursed for overtime. What I guess, I guess what I was getting at is that the, uh, the organized crime drug enforcement folks will reimburse the cost of the overtime, but not the extra cost of, pension contributions, taxes and whatever. I mean, I don't, I don't even know. There will be some expenses that will not be reimbursed caused by these officers working overtime, but the, I guess I'll say the gross cost of the overtime can be submitted to the government and then they'll reimburse you. So that would, that part would be a wash. It would be only those things that are, I'll call it benefits, that are tied to the pay of the officer. Those would be, uh, expenses that will, you, you won't get reimbursed for. I don't know what they are, but the number of 25,000 is just pulled from the agreement in terms of how much the overtime reimbursement can be.
Can this be per employee, $25,000?
I think so.
We're only going to have one employee sign.
Well, I know and that's fine, but I don't like the way this is written up, that if, you know, we can do that.
Well, I would like more reading.
I, I kind of doubt that the benefit cost to you, uh, would be $25,000 per employee. I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying we, we have.
The contribution to the pension plan and things like that won't be reimbursed.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, just hypothetically, we, we've got to say eight officers and each one draw 25,000 a year out, which probably will never happen, but, you know, we got $200,000 there.
Well, what'll happen is the, the chief's budget would be reimbursed for a majority of that cost.
The other thing, Eric has control over that, don't you?
Yes.
Whether or not he must send anybody.
Yes. So the, the $25,000, like you said, was, was what is actually specified in the agreement for the amount that they will allow per employee. Uh, again, at this point, we'll have one person that will be participating in this and whatever money, again, with the exception of, you know, paying into FICA or retirement, uh, the, the actual dollars for the overtime that, that we budget and is, I, I don't want to say it's discretionary, but it is, it is a discretionary fund that comes, uh, you know, that is a, a budgeted item.
Yeah, it's not discretionary.
It's within our discretion to, to expend that or, or not allow the overtime. But the, these, if, if the officer works 10 hours of overtime for them and we pay the 10 hours of overtime, we're going to submit that for reimbursement and get that 10 hours back from, from the government. So my understanding is they just needed a number in there to, to make it more official or it was, it was too open-ended last time, so we just went with the number that was in the agreement. I don't ever anticipate going over our, our line item budget that we already have for overtime because of this, because of this project.
Chief, you said we will get reimbursed for that?
Yes.
For sure?
Absolutely. And I, and I contacted the other agencies that participate in this to make sure that it's, that everything's on the up and up and, and they say it, you know, the first, especially starting out, it's, it's a little lengthy, a month turnaround or whatever, but it'll definitely be within our budget year for the overtime on this. But then again, what this will allow us to do is one, partner with the agency, have access to their equipment and personnel for cases that we need, uh, but also entitle us to, uh, the federal forfeiture money down the road as these cases come up for prosecution.
Chief, this will also be used, I mean, we're going to gain some experience?
Yes. And contacts and, I mean, it's, it's going to be a great network and it already has been. We've already, we're already working with these guys now.
Right.
Just not playing any time for the, the overtime or anything, but they're, they're actually assisting us, uh, with whatever we need now, so.
So is this going to be something you're going to target a particular officer or?
They, they have asked for our K-9 officer to be made available to them so that they, they, for some of their.
That makes sense.
Interdiction stuff that they are doing, uh, they have asked for Officer Cusinelli and his K-9 partner.
So this will basically give him the opportunity to make some extra income and maybe stick around a little longer?
That's, that's our hope.
Yes.
Anything that can give officers a little bit of extra income and it's a great thing, especially if it's not going to cost us.
Well, I, the forfeiture thing, that could be something big at, at any given time, right?
Yeah, they, they, I was telling, uh, City Administrator, they just completed a, I think it's actually a cigarette smuggling investigation that they, they seized millions and millions of dollars. So we, obviously we wouldn't get the entire percentage of that, but, uh, they base their percentage on how much involvement our, our agency assisted and in this case, in the absence of any other K-9, that, that's a valuable asset to them that, that, you know, can help, um, forward their investigation and, and hopefully entitle us to a larger percentage.
Sounds like a win-win.
I hope so. I hope so. Again, we will be responsible for the, for the maintenance on the vehicle, but, um.
You gotta do that anyway.
We gotta do that anyways.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Motion carries. Uh, bill number 4160, an ordinance accepting and approving the subdivision plat of Klein Heights, a resub of, lot survey lot one of Highway 32 Industrial Park in the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, first reading.
Okay, um, actually, let me bring these over. This was taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, Carlin likes the client owned the property at 2153 Highway 32 and here's one copy here if you guys want to scrub this out. The, um, they're proposing to.
For me, yeah.
To subdivide the property. To allow for sale of the additional unused portion that, um. So at the top here is 32. Here's Klein, the existing Klein, the building that's there.
Sure the community centers look over that one.
That's right.
So I'm getting my bearings here.
Progress Parkway is right there.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right.
So, um, they're proposing to have this approved as a minor subdivision with a variance for three lots instead of the normal two lots would be for a minor subdivision because of the unusual shape of it and the, they're proposing to sell it to the same individuals so it wouldn't be partitioned off into different, you know.
You see nothing wrong with what they're doing, right Carl?
I see nothing wrong with it.
So it's still going to stay C1 general?
It's still going to stay a C1, it is, and, um.
So P and Z's recommendation is?
Is to approve.
Okay.
That was with a five, zero and a three absent vote. Do you have any further questions as far as?
Where's their, their, they're looking at?
Their.
It, the.
So that's their existing.
This is existing structure here, so it would be proposed to, this would be lot two and this would be lot three.
So then they're going to retain this piece?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then the lots two and three would be the two lots that would be subdivided off and those would be sold to the same individual, yeah.
I see.
Fire happens to be there.
And that is.
Yeah, well, we need to hear from them. Why not?
Well, my name's Jason Ballsler and here representing me and my partner Matt Schwager. We are the ones proposing to buy the piece of property. However, we cannot do that with an all-in-one deed. So, you know, or, or just so you know, our future plans would be to relocate HFP Advisors, the CPA firm in St. Genevieve out into. The, the bigger square plot facing 32.
And that's still in the city limits.
Absolutely.
So there you go here. Don't lose anything there.
I make a motion, we approve bill number 4160.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a second read?
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
A second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're done.
Thank you.
You're done.
Well, we have to do the second read.
Bill number 4160, an ordinance accepting and approving the subdivision plat of Klein Heights, a resub of, is that five?
Part one.
Oh, park survey wa, lot one of Highway 32 Industrial Park within the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Puff.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Razika.
Yes.
Eight yes, Daryl Knows, bill number 4160 now becomes ordinance 4095.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next one is bill number 4161, an ordinance amending Schedule II stop signs of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code and designating an authorized four-way stop sign at the intersection of Robert Street and Memorial Drive, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for a second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill number 4161, an ordinance amending Schedule II stop signs of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code and designating an authorized four-way stop sign at the intersection of Robert Street and Memorial Drive, second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Razika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince. Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Puff.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Grimager.
Yes.
Eight yes, Daryl Knows. Bill number 4161 now becomes ordinance 4096.
And bill number 4162, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Hoff Camp, Wapatello, Missouri for the purchase of an MCUS hydraulic cutter in an amount not to exceed $5,859.75 and amending the Rural Fire Fund Budget Number 60. First reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to see this move forward, so I'd make a motion for a second reading. They're going to, they can get this thing right away, can't they? If we go ahead and.
Secondly.
Generally, you know, you have to need a sense of urgency. So the sense of urgency would be public safety.
Right. It is.
We have a motion and a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill number 4162, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Hoff Camp, Wapatello, Missouri for the purchase of an MCUS hydraulic cutter in an amount not to exceed $5,859.75 and amending the Rural Fire Fund Budget Number 60. Second reading.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Puff.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Grimager.
Yes.
Alderman Rosika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Eight yes, Daryl Knows. Bill number 4162 now becomes ordinance 4097.
Bill number 4163, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri for the purchase of an MSA confined space supplied air system in an amount not to exceed $12,417.67 and amending the Rural Fire Department Budget Number 60. First reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It's hard to argue with a sense of urgency.
Other business, we have a temporary liquor license. Zelleria J.C.'s is requesting a temporary liquor license for the Jurdafet on Saturday, August 12th and Sunday, August 13th of 2017 for 223 Merchant Street.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We have a street closure request. Mr. Bob Mueller is requesting a street closure for the Patriotic Fourth of July Celebration on July 4th, 2017 from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on Third Street from Market to Merchant. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, my name's Bob Mueller and I'm a co-chair of the Patriotic Fourth. Something, this will be our fourth one. And it's been a good event this year. The mayor's going to be our keynote speaker. And we're going to do something a little bit different. The museum is putting together a monument to memorialize the first Battle of St. Genevieve Citizen Soldiers in May 26, 1780, in the Battle of San Carlos.
Wow.
St. Louis. And that's when we lost our first citizen soldier. So it's going to be a nice little event. If it rains, we won't set up the barricades. The diversity center is going to let us there and places before. Invite all of the aldermen and the staff to come down. It's just an hour long. It's a lot of fun.
It never rained on the Fourth of July, though.
Last year.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And motion carries. We have a request from Vince Fowler, owner of Downtown Sandbar LLC, 299 Merchant Street, to add Sunday sales to his current liquor license that is due to renew on July 1, 2017.
He currently does not have Sunday?
No, he's just wishing to add Sunday sales to his license.
Everybody else does, other places. Serious.
It used to be, where you, it used to be up to a couple of years ago, you had to sell food on Sunday to be able to get it. They changed the law.
The blue laws and all that kind of.
They changed it. Now anybody can.
Oh, really? Good.
Yeah. Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah.
Any other communication from the board?
I had a message from Sandra asking me to remind everybody about the French Festival this weekend. She sent me a schedule as well here that I'm looking at. Downtown on the 10th. Not seeing times on here what she sent me, but there's a lot of fun things going on. So check out Downtown on the 10th.
Isn't St. Genevieve?
There you go.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All right, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.